I was on the Board of Appeals, I'm Marty Aiken, Chairman. Our Vice Chairman is on his way in. We have Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Hemel, Board Members, and we have a few things we have to do first. Is Patrick Foley here, lawyer for AD Independence? Patrick, you here? Can you give us a high sign if you're here? Do you know if he's there?
He's not there.
This is me. Is that Patrick?
There's a Pat and a Patrick in the waiting room. I just sent an unmute to Patrick. I'm not sure if that's him or... Patrick, I just...
Patrick, you here? All right. Well, do you have a letter there if he's not here? I have a letter here from the attorney himself, and case number ZBA 2187, scheduled on the whole business. Patrick Foley for AD Independence have... Mr. O'Brien, do you want to make a motion after I read this letter? Can you hear me guys?
Yeah, I can hear.
Oh, yours muted.
I needed to be.
Oh, okay. I saw the sign, that was good. Unmute me. I got a letter here from Patrick Foley, 2822 at 3:28 PM. Madam Clerk, I am going to withdraw Independence Ave. So, could we make a motion, case number ZBA 2187, make a motion to withdraw without prejudice? Mr. O'Brien, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 2187 for Independence Ave, I make a motion to allow it to be withdrawn.
Second.
On the motion? Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote, please?
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, I'm.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Brian Himmel?
Yes.
Pardon me, again.
That's it. Now, we have four members. Okay. All right, guys, I don't know where the Vice Chair is. I'd like to give him a minute, but yeah, someone could text him if he's gonna make it. What happens to the people that are listening, if we only end up with four members, you have a right to continue the case, but if there's five members, because you need all four of us to win your area. Unless you have a finding, you can lose one person. Three to one would be a win for a finding. So, I'll go case to case and hang in everybody, because if he shows up in the next few minutes, we won't have to do what we're doing right now. We'll just mute it. Case number ZBA 2196, 166 Bassel Street. Do you want to go forward or move your case? Who's taking care of that?
If the applicant, whoever is speaking in behalf, if you want to use the star nine, turn your...
It's Pat up on the left. Pat, is that you? Yeah. If you could unmute Pat, please, right here.
All right, I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Are you saying, what I just heard is if not everybody is on board, we might not make it tonight. I have to consult with my...
Yeah, all right, we can get back to you. You have to have four votes for variances. If you're looking for a finding, you only need three out of four.
Can you give me a second, or are you gonna get back?
I'll come back to you. I'll come back, that's fine. And if, I think the Vice Chair is gonna show up. He's probably just picking up his kids or something. He ended up a minute late. Little rainy, hope you're... Go to ZBA 2199, 11 Chick Street. You know who's taking care of that one? Britton Munson. Right here, right underneath, Patrick. Right here?
All right, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and go forward.
Okay, forward. ZBA 21, 221, 37 Fifth Street. Bill Fallon. Mr. Mayor, are you there?
Yes, hi. Mr. Chairman, how are you? I'm prepared to go forward with this matter. It's not a...
Very good. Yeah. Thank you. Case number ZBA 222, 334 Rock Island Road. Eileen? Right in the right here, where are we? Right there. Asked to unmute. Eileen? Yes? Did you hear what I said?
I'm sorry, no. I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Yes. There's four members here tonight, not five. If you want to go forward, you need all four votes. If you're looking for a finding, I didn't read the whole thing here. If you're looking for a finding, you only need three out of four tonight.
Yeah, we're looking for a variance and a finding this evening. I'm in communication with the owner, Sushila. She's in the meeting right now.
Yeah.
Could you give us two minutes if you don't mind, so I can give her a call?
Yep, no problem, because we got a couple cases we want to go forward, so we can always get back in. The Vice Chair, he might come.
Thank you. I'll let that do now.
You're welcome. ZBA 223, 11 Prescott. Yeah, Jim? Jim, can we unmute Jim?
Yes, we're moving forward.
All right, move forward. Very good, thank you. All right, I'll get back to those two, unless, Pat, do you know yet? Do you know yet? Wait a minute. Okay.
I'm consulting back and forth with my business partner.
All right, no, take your time. We got a few cases we can do when we get back to you.
All right, we're hoping for that other guy to show up.
I know, I know. No rush. Okay. Case number ZBA 2199. Britton Munson for a finding to remove the existing enclosed deck and replace it with a new deck and mudroom on the premises 11 Chick Street. Is the applicant or the representative here, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. So, what I'm looking...
Are you a lawyer?
I am, but this is actually my house, so...
Okay, as long as you're a lawyer, that's fine. You're clear to speak. I'll help you, God, we know that.
Thank you, Chairman. What we're looking to do is, there's already a structure there that's kind of enclosed, and honestly, was kind of looked like it was a three-season patio that they were trying to use.
Yep.
So, it's already encroaching on my property line there. So, what I'm wanting to do is take it down, because it's very decrepit, it's falling apart. And just do it as a normal raised deck, so the underneath would be open.
Yep.
And then, a little section on top, sitting on top of it, would just be a new mudroom, basically creating a new front entrance to the house.
Right.
So, it's just a 12-foot by 6-foot little mudroom entrance to the home. And then, we want to extend the deck across the front of the home there on Chick Street for just that little, basically 24-foot to the edge of it. Purpose being that we've got, we're hoping to put in some glass doors right there where we could actually walk out and look at the water.
What are you gonna do with the other parking? Are you taking that? Are you just gonna leave that there? You're gonna have the parking right there?
We are. We're planning to leave that existing little paved, well, it's not paved, but it's got pavers where we're parking. We are planning to leave that there.
Okay.
We would like to, if possible, park underneath the new structure. Conservation said that was fine. They didn't have a problem with it. Obviously, it's up to you guys of what you would prefer, but we're kind of hoping to park under just to give some, you know, protection from the elements.
Right, right.
But it would stay open.
Yeah, I saw that. Then the new front door, yeah. Then the deck off, all right. So, I see what it was down there, and it's like, so you're coming out 3.6 feet on that little section, correct?
Right, it would just match what was already there.
Which correctly is, number nine's the same way as yours.
Correct. They matched our existing one when they put theirs in.
Right, right, right. And you got the seawall right there and everything else, right?
Yes.
Highway, get to look at the cars and...
Every day, all day long.
Every day, all day, there you go. Okay, any questions from the Board? Mr. O'Brien? Any questions at this time? Oh, can someone unmute him? What happened here?
Frank Kitz.
Frank Kitz, who's unmuted? There you go.
I don't have any questions at this time. I think you ask the questions for me, Marty.
Thank you. Mr. Chin?
No questions at this time.
Questions, and Mr. Hemel?
No questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak now, speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Raise your hand. Pat, Jonathan, can you go through what they have to do, make it easy for them?
Sure. Anybody looking to speak tonight, on any case, you're gonna go into your reactions button, if you're on a laptop, and hit the virtual hand raise. You could always turn on your monitor and give us a wave. If you're calling it on a cell phone, it'll be star nine.
Second call?
Not seeing any hands currently.
Third call. Call at party hearing clause. Any correspondence, Madam Clerk? A letter here from DPW dated January 31st, 2022, 11 Chick Street, case number ZBA 2199. We have reviewed about reference project and have no comments. Call at party hearing clause. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, closed or undecided in this case. Want to make a comment, speak? Second call, Jonathan?
Not seeing any hands.
Third call, closed. I'll be voting in favor. I know what he wants to do down there by the water, and he's, it's got the open space across, like, it's... It's got a lot of traffic down there, and trying to probably get up a little from the fumes on the bottom. I get it. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, likewise, I'll also be voting in favor.
Mr. Chin?
I'm also in favor.
And Mr. Hemel?
In favor.
But I have a motion, please, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 21-99, Britton Munson for a finding to remove the existing enclosed deck and replace it with a new deck and a mudroom on the premises number 11 Chick Street Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested finding.
Seconded.
Seconded, both. Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, okay. On the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yeah.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Pardon me.
Oh, yeah, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move on. Oh, 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 yeah, he's got vacation reasons, I'm sorry. So, anyone here, he's not gonna be in here. Pat, if you have an answer yet, it's up to you, or you can wait and move it, whatever you want.
She's muted.
No, I did it by action. Can you hear me, Pat?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so, of course, I'm going back and forth with my business partner, who's not sure what we should do, but I'm gonna take a chance. You know, we've been before the Board on two separate occasions on 166 Bassel Street. We've, you know, we've taken the height down. We've changed it from a two-family to a one-family, single-family now.
All right, all right, Pat, I just have to know if you're going forward.
Oh, yes, we're going forward.
All right, thank you, and there's one more. We have the Rock Island Road.
Eileen Rosa?
Yeah, Eileen Rosa, did you get an answer yet? Sorry, where did she go?
Hello, sorry about that. I was with the owners.
No, that's fine, and if you don't know yet, we can come back to you.
Yeah, our only question was if the fifth member is not coming, and we want to reschedule, does that mean we'll be on the schedule for the next agenda, meaning 30 days from today?
Probably March 8th. We can put you on for March 8th.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
March 8th, we can put you down for March 8th.
March 8th? Okay, so, I'm sorry, can you just give me one more minute then, so I can share this information with the owners? I have them on the phone, March 8th. Just give me a second. I don't want to make this decision by myself. Well, Sushila is the owner. She's in the line as well, so not sure if she'll be able to join us. Okay, so they have decided to present, so I can move on.
All right, that's Rock Island Road. Very good. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I said you're up, you're up. We have 37 Felt Street, William Fallon looking variance finding to replace a three-season family room in the lower... You're up, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I represent John Christian, who's lived there for at least a couple of decades, and grew up in Quincy. He lives there with his wife. He's essentially just trying to improve the three-season porch and the rear with very minor extension of about three feet, a little over three feet to the rear. He's gonna put a complete foundation in as well. It increases the rear side setback to about 19 feet, as opposed to 23 feet, I think, or 23... 19.5 feet from 23 feet, and it only increases the floor area ratio by about 54 square feet or so. So, it's not a major variance that's being requested. I'd suggest the fact that he's been there, I think the neighbors are pretty much fine with it. And I'd ask the Board to please vote in favor of it. If they have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
No, I see what you're doing. It's in the backyard. You know, the front of the house is what it is, and in the back of the house, there's plenty of room back there. And I looked at the neighbors and stuff. To me, I didn't have any questions when I saw the thing. It seemed fine. But let's ask the Board what they have since your presentation. Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
Not at this time, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Mr. Hemel?
No questions.
Okay, is there anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call? Second call?
Not seeing any hands.
Third call, closed. I got a letter here from, move on to DPW. January 31st, 2022, 37 Fifth Street, case number ZBA 221. We reviewed above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone, call at party hearing clause, anyone opposed or undecided, want to speak? Opposed or undecided? Second call?
Not seeing any hands.
Third call, closed. I know what he wants to do, and like you say, it's only a couple of feet in the back, and you still got a big yard back there. Couldn't a small addition about? I'll be voting in favor. Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise.
Mr. Chin?
Favor.
And Mr. Hemel?
In favor.
Have a motion complete, Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case Z22-1. Attorney William Fallon for a variance and finding to replace a three-season porch with a four-season family room addition on the premises number 37 Phillips Street, and make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding.
Seconded?
Seconded with the motion change to Phillips Street from Phillips Street, that's all.
Yeah, Fifth Street. Yeah, Phillips, and that's all.
Did I say Phillips?
I didn't even hear it, so it sounded good to me.
I drove to Fifth Street today, by the way.
Fifth Street today. I went by Phillips today, too.
Mr. Chin, seconded.
Seconded. Is there anything in the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yes. Charlie O'Brien?
Oh, yeah.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Pardon me, again.
Yes. We're in the... Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Members of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's go back to ZBA 2196. 166 Bassel Street. OTG Architects Patricia Wellborn for variance to construct a single-family home on the premises number 166 Bassel Street Quincy. You have the floor.
Okay, hi, Members of the Board. Could you mind unmuting my business partner, Carlos Caraballo?
Yeah, Carlos?
Carlos.
Pat, you're an attorney, correct?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay, if you could, please, where's Carlos?
Right here.
Carlos, right there. Carlos asked for a mute. Carlos, you there?
Let me see.
Carlos?
Yeah, I'm sending the request, but I'm not getting any response back.
Okay, well...
All right, Mr. Chin, could you please give an order?
Pat, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've been before the Board on two separate occasions. We brought this from a, you know, a two-family down to a single-family per... You know, trying to comply with the comments that were made. We're seeking relief from a side, left-side setback from 13 feet to 10 feet. That's all we're asking for now.
And everything else you're saying is correct. You got 25 up front, yep. What's the size? Is this 29, if I got this right? Wasn't it 29 by 40 something?
Would you like me to...
Yeah, why don't you go through that?
I'm just gonna say, if I share my screen, I know that I have...
Jonathan, could you let her?
Show it up.
Show what you're gonna build for everybody, so everyone sees it.
Host disabled participants. Okay, where was I here? In a second, I had it up, and of course, it was in it, yeah. Here we are. So, that's the, you can see here is the...
We can't, wait a minute.
That's got something on her end that's not showing it.
Not coming up yet.
I'm sorry.
Is this Carlos says that?
I know, I have it up on my, I hit shared screen.
Jonathan might be able to help you.
You just gotta, I think you gotta make sure you select what screen you're sharing and bring it up, unless you share all screen. And also, Carlos, if you can hear me, try logging out and coming back in. I know you're having trouble unmuting yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not seeing what else to do here. It's 50 feet by 116 feet, that, you know, the depth of the lot is 116 by 50.
Right, but you got a 30-foot house, right?
Uh, yeah.
29?
Yeah, it's 27 wide.
27 by 51, not counting the deck.
Is it not showing yet?
Nope, it's not up yet. 27 by 51, 7, yeah.
And a 12-foot deck, and they still make the setbacks?
Yes.
Yeah, they don't make, on the other side, they don't.
The only setback is the 10 feet on the left-hand side. And the host there, that, the host that's there now is about six feet off the sideline.
Yeah, and it's way back, too.
Yes, correct.
All the way back on the lot, right. I know that she shot in the side that the person's right up against the fence, you know? I know, and they had plenty of space over there before, because the house was in the back, I know, just... Well, I like to see the shared screen, so you can go through this, so everyone else knows what you're building.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I'm, you know, technically not the best. Let me see if, I'm gonna call Carlos.
Mr. Chairman, are the plans on, are the plans on Open Gov? I might be able to pull them up and share them.
All right, we can always come back. If it's gonna take a little while to do that, we can do another case and come back.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Why don't we do that and see if you can square away that?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let's move on, we'll come back to that.
Mr. Chairman, we have a hand up. I'm not sure if there's a question, or if you want to... It's a phone number, 781-706-1335.
Yeah, it might be Carlos, I don't know, see what that is. Hello?
Head up the user 1335, last four numbers of your cell phone, go ahead and unmute Carlos.
Carlos, got your hand up? Who is this?
Hello?
Yeah, who's 1335? Who is that?
This is the engineer, Patrick Rosengrave. I did the plans there, and I have a problem getting on the screen, but I can only talk by phone.
I know, we gotta have someone, Patrick, put the pitches up there for, so the audience can see what they're building, too.
Okay.
If they have any questions, so, she's working on that. We're gonna come back to this case in about two minutes, three minutes. We're just gonna move on, do one more, and we'll come right back to you, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
You can hang in there. We're gonna mute you again. All right, mute that, okay. Those muted, Jonathan, when I muted them?
Yeah, they look good.
All right. Okay.
Can I hold on to those comments for a bit?
Yes, I got them right here. And, yeah, let me go home. We got the six-month extension, okay, now... Down at Rock Island Road. Eileen? Eileen, where's Eileen? Eileen Rosa?
Yes, Mr. Ch...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, here.
Uh, do you need to take an oath?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
You wanna take an oath, Mr. Chin?
Yes, um, Mr. Rosa, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
And you have the floor. Why don't you explain what you wanna do?
Okay.
Rose?
Thank you. Um, well, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Eileen Rosa from Rosa Design and Construction. Uh, I am the architectural designer, working with the owners, Susila and Kamal Bamani. They are in the call as well. Um, and the intention of this proposal is uh, it consists of an extension of living space uh primarily um staying within the current uh footprint and extend the living space in the basement and the second floor with a unfinished attic space to accommodate storage and a two-car garage to comply with the parking requirements to for a total of three parking spaces, um including an existing parking space on the left side of the property. Um, generally speaking, um, the the extension of living space consists of uh the existing habitable space is two thousand one hundred and fifty-six square feet. Um, and we are proposing three thousand one hundred and ninety um square feet. And again, the intention is just to build uh right above the current um dwelling.
Mm-hmm, and you're gonna use the basement? Correct?
Correct, I'm sorry.
You're gonna use the basement?
Correct, yes.
All right, so you're gonna move, where are they gonna, three bedrooms on the second floor, is that what I saw?
Yeah, which is the existing condition, is basically extending the bedrooms. Uh, we're gonna keep the same amount of bedrooms, and the basement is ungraded at the rear.
Yep.
Um, just to serve as uh the space with the the existing pool at the rear, just to have a nice concept.
Yeah, walkout, okay.
Correct.
Now, they got a beautiful piece of poppy down there, and it really needs, you know, help to make it what they want it, that's for sure. It's really beautiful.
It is.
It's gorgeous down there. I'm just worried about the third floor down there. What what are you doing up there? Is that just a?
It's just an unfinished attic to accommodate storage. Uh, they have plenty of space in the basement, first floor and second floor. And because of the size of the uh the dwelling itself, by by the time it comes completely, they're gonna have a total of three thousand square feet, which is more than enough for their extended family.
Right, and and I'm just making sure that uh the design up there, there's not gonna be uh no bathrooms or nothing upstairs, correct?
Correct, yes, just unfinished be um attic space.
Very good. Those are my questions. Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chin, any questions?
Just trying to understand the uh the third-floor attic space and how that's going to be. What kind of what kind of space is that um height-wise and this, you know, and and also dimensions? Can you go through that a little bit?
Sure. I can, hopefully I'm able to share my screen this time. Second.
You answered the static in the notes, yes.
Okay, so let me share my screen. Can you see it there?
Yep.
Okay. So let me go down to the attic space. So on the left side, you have the existing uh condition, and on the right side is the proposed floor plan. And um this addition here on the uh in the attic space uh will be about one thousand one hundred and fourteen square feet. Total um square footage.
Now, what what are you putting on the walls on? That's what I think he's talking about. What are you what are you putting there for walls?
For walls in the attic space?
Correct.
I'm sorry, you cut off. What was what was the question again?
It's an unfinished attic, not finishing the walls, correct?
It's completely unfinished, uh including the walls, so basically, yeah, so it's just a rafter just wants to come up, correct?
You're just putting the floor down so you can.
So you can walk in and accommodate the storage, correct?
And and the and the 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 uh window and all that stuff is is really just a staircase.
Yeah, there are some windows at the front and the rear, uh this.
No, I'm just saying, but that that dorma is for the staircase, is that correct?
Oh, correct.
Right.
Yes, it's just to make sure we have uh enough um height.
Right.
Clearance.
Chin, I don't know if she answered the question you wanted.
I just wanted to um understand the dimensions inside in terms of whether someone could stand up throughout the space, whether, you know, they the um whether the space is gonna be limited for, but I see six skylights being proposed up there. Um, I can't really tell whether there are any windows from from my plan.
Yeah, if you look at the front uh and the rear, there are windows, and to be honest with you, in regards to the skylight, like natural lighting, uh
Is it gonna be some sort of playroom up there, or I don't know?
But this was just an option to make sure we have enough natural lighting in this unfinished space, many uh natural lighting as possible, but uh it's under the possibilities of removing it if needed, because uh we just talked about that a couple of weeks ago, actually.
About what? I didn't hear that.
Uh, removing the skylights, this is technically not needed for an unfinished attic, so, yeah.
My only concern is that if later it becomes finished, it becomes a, you know, um, the best the best view in the house of the ocean.
Um, right.
But it's but it's an unfinished attic space for storage, so.
The height in that's only only if you stand by the staircases, you have the height, correct?
Yeah, the height being proposed is about eight feet, so so there is some good height there for uh who knows, like any potential uh application for later on for uh finished space, but I don't think this is the case because of the amount uh of habitable space being proposed.
Well, that's what we're looking at, and 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 if we put in the document, it's an unfinished attic and it'll stay like that, that's what I'm gonna put in there.
Absolutely.
Okay, so as long as we understand that, that that there won't be no more bedrooms upstairs, so.
Absolutely not, correct.
Attic, and that will be put in the uh documents we 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 do here to make it fair for everybody.
Correct.
Yeah, no further questions then.
Is that, is that okay, Mr. Chin?
Yes, thank you, my.
All right, uh, Mr. Himmel, anything?
Just answered my questions. I was concerned about the height up there. It it does have potential to be built out.
Oh, it does, and and you're right, and and, you know, there's 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 tough parking up there, really is where they are, because the streets, some people park in the street, they got three cars or cars and only one little spot, so it's tight down there. And they have three spots, so they got you can't have, you know, five bedrooms and five cars that don't work up there.
I know, I store I store my kayaks about four doors up.
Oh, you 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 did, what did you connect? Oh, you store them there? Oh, I thought you said you you rode them up to her house.
I thought he said he stole them from there.
That's what I said at first, man, he goes, he must have said he's he drove up there. He said drove, not stole.
I paddled on up last week.
Beautiful, beautiful. Okay, let's move on. Uh, is there anyone that would like to uh speak in favor? I'm part. I'm part. See, under. Is there anyone, second call?
Any hands?
Third call? All that party having close, I got a letter here, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, three-thirty-four, Rock Island Road, case number ZBA twenty-two-two. Wow, love twos today. We have reviewed this middle above threat from project and have no comments. Uh, let's move on. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second?
No, I'm seeing any hands, Charlie.
Third call? All that party having close, uh I just wanna put in there, uh, Madam Clerk, if in the motion, uh, Mr. O'Brien, that they, it'll be unfinished attic, no bedrooms, no bathrooms, no hot water.
Do I have to spell it out specifically, or can I just say that?
Yeah, just say no, no, no bedrooms, unfinished attic, with no, no, no water or or toilets in the attic space. Or bedrooms, three of them, so we know it's covered. Uh, anything you wanna say, Mr. O'Brien?
I know, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chin, any comments?
Um, no comments.
Okay, Mr. Himmel, anything?
No further comments.
All right. Mr. O'Brien, if you can make a motion, please?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, regarding case two-two dash two, Eileen Rito Rosa for a variance to reconstruct the existing home on the premises number three-thirty-four Rock Island Road in Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested variance and findings subject to the following conditions: The attic will remain unfinished. No bedrooms or bathrooms will ever be built up there.
Second it?
Second.
Second, on the motion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can I have a voice vote, please?
Yes. Charlie O'Brien?
Uh, yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Don Himmel?
Yes.
Martin Maygan?
Yes. All right, uh, now we're back to Vassal Street. Do you have that? Oh, look who's here, hey.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh.
Yes, I have an assistant here.
All right, he's gonna take, you know, Mr. Chin, if you could, please swear in uh where we.
Yes. Mr. Caraballo, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the chance. Uh, let me share my screen now.
Oh, okay.
Um, so this time, what we're proposing is um it's a four-bedroom, uh, four-bedroom uh single-house. Um, so basically, well, the reason we're pushing back the house and not align with the rest of the houses just to provide more green space on the front and the back. Um, basically, the total length is fifty-one feet by twenty-seven. And the reason is because the the size of bathroom, if I narrow the size of the bathroom, will be shorter. Um, so, we're gonna continue using the existing driveway. Uh, the driveway will care, I mean, it's up to three car at the moment. Um, and we're gonna replace the pavement and make it more imperious um concrete, so more imperious um material of finish. Uh, this is the second floor. On the second floor, we're gonna have, like I said, this is a four-bedroom um private, uh, single-family. The reason is um that I my client has a parent, uh, father-in-law living with them and two kids. Um, so, and the attic is gonna be unfinished attic, will be access to a um access attic, uh access panel through here, and the attic is gonna be used, again, is unfinished, it's gonna be used mostly for storage and mechanical room for um the HVAC system, water system, since we don't have any basement on this uh house. Uh, in term in term of the house, the house is pretty much gonna be a colonial, colonial style, gonna be uh similar to the house next to it. Um, finish is gonna be stucco, and it's simple uh colonial style.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
And what do you have in the attic?
Uh, nothing. It's it's just gonna be open, again, like I said, it's gonna be used for storage use purpose only, not finish, it's gonna be uh not even a finished floor, it's gonna be a substrate, subfloor, just uh uh to be able to use it as a starch.
All right, I'm just looking at at the quick numbers I was going over for your file.
Uh huh.
And it's, and it was one point, point one-three before, of course, with that little house. But what I come up with was point six on your new home.
Um.
You're two and a half stories, right? So you got
Yep.
You're gonna have thirty-four-hundred-and-forty-two gross living area. You got fifty-eight-hundred lots, that's correct?
That's correct.
So so we're at a point six. Now, my question is, why couldn't we cut this house down a little? Uh, and and make it so so we can get a closer number to the floor number? Yeah.
Um.
Now, you're looking for a finding, correct?
That's correct.
Right, but there's no variance on 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 the FAR. There's nothing I see in the paperwork here. I'm just wondering why. No, that's why you have setback, right, right, just it. I just didn't see what, you know.
We can, we can work to reduce um to reduce this a little bit more. Um.
Did you, did you go to the clinic that uh the commissioner puts on?
Uh, me?
Yeah.
Did I went to what? Sorry?
Have you ever gone to the, yeah, zoning clinic that the commissioner puts on, Mr. Duka?
No.
And and he'll, he'll help you, he goes through everything, he tries to get you as close he can, and shows you exactly what you need for for variances and for all that stuff. If you need one, if you're really close, he says, you know, maybe the zoning board could live with this or that. I mean, this is what he does. He tries to help all the neighbors. I've seen him.
Uh, what is his name again? I believe we'll be trying to contact him.
Mr. Duka?
Pat? It's not the person we've been trying to contact and not able to get any response back?
Well, Mr. Duka answered every call. I I
Really? I'm sorry, I
It's gotta be someone, it's gotta be someone else. Well, yeah, maybe it was, maybe it was an inspector or something.
I believe, uh, Mr. Duka, Mr. Duka worked for the, oh, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't have my glasses.
He's the commission.
Yeah, and he worked on the um
He runs so.
Permit, on the permits, uh, permit.
He does everything. He runs this place. He's the judge of all his inspectors and everyone here.
Uh, yeah, I believe he saw this foreplan. Um.
He he might have, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, he did.
He probably didn't say nothing, yeah, because you wanted to bring it up, but I'm just saying, us as a board, I think it's a good thing that you maybe should sit with them while we're working on our little coffee. I mean, you know, that's like, uh, you know, it's fifty percent over, almost, so. I just think we can work out something a little better than that for for everyone in that neighborhood and and the the piece of property that you have is fifty feet wide, you know what I mean?
Uh huh.
And uh, and I think that we did just come down, have a have a speak with him. That's my opinion, and 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 I'll ask the others, I don't know how they feel. Uh, I know they probably did their homework, too, and they're looking at that, too, if our point six is a little little up there. Uh, maybe you could work with Mr. Duka and the zoning clinic and and try to figure out something to grab you know, a foot here, a foot there, and.
And then it's, do we have to come back to the hearing?
Well, yeah, you will. That's my opinion, and I'm just saying, I wouldn't vote for this right now personally because of the fire. It's just too much for me. Uh, so, and there is only four of us tonight, so that's that's not a good answer, but I know, I don't know how, Mr. O'Brien, let me let me see what Mr. O'Brien wants to say. So Brian, I'm talking about the fire, go to point six.
Yeah, I I again, they're they're close compared to what we've been looking at at that site, so.
I know, I know, but
Let's, if we can do better, let's bring it home.
Yeah, and then we can bring it all home with everybody, make everybody happy. Yeah, and then we can bring it all home with everybody, make everybody happy, you won't have all these.
You don't need much, right?
Uh, well, they gotta bring it down some, I mean, you know, they could shorten up that thing three, three feet or four feet, bring it in, you know?
Okay.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Chin, any comments on this?
No, I think you both touched on it, um, it's still a good-sized house for a pretty small lot, so I think if the fire is important.
Yep. Important for the people living there, you're right. Mr. Himmel?
I think the fire is very important, it is a very small lot. They've come a long way
Yep.
from the previous, uh, request, but, uh, I'd say it needs to be shaved down a bit, not a lot.
Yep, bring it down, maybe we can all live with it. Alright, instead of, instead of doing this, would you rather postpone the hearing for a month and then come to the clinic and get in twenty, twenty-second? Yeah. Does that work, March twenty-second?
Yeah, it worked. Um.
Madam Clerk, here's a letter, uh, DPW letter which we can, want me to read that in, let me, let me read this to you anyway, so you have an idea of the, unless you've got it already, a letter from the DPW, January twenty-eighth. "We have reviewed the above- referenced project, our comments are as follows: Install a gate and box for water service at the sidewalk. Install a clean-out for sewer services. Cut and cap existing water service main. Cut and cap existing sewer service at the back of the sidewalk. Upon completion, this project has built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, needs to be cemented along with digital path." Uh, you might have that anyway, but I just wanna make sure you, there's other things that you have to look at, but, uh, we can do that when we get back here in four weeks.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. O'Brien, can we have a motion to postpone this to thirty, twenty, uh?
Chairman, regarding case twenty-one dash ninety-six, OTG Architects, Patricia Wildborn, for a variance to construct a single-family home on the premises numbered one sixty-six Vassal Street. I make a motion to postpone the, uh, final decision until March twenty-second.
Second.
The second on the motion? CNN, Madam Clerk, can we have, uh, voice vote?
Yes, Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Mark Maygan?
Yes. We'll see you the twenty-second.
That's fine, thank you.
Take, take and meet with the zoning people and see, they, they understand what we're kinda looking for down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I got, got this all scribbled up and I can't see, I missed one, which one?
Here on, uh, part twenty-two, that street.
Oh, yeah, we did, alright, Prescott, there we go. Uh, JCBT Architect for a variance to construct a new two-and-a-half-story, single-family home with a one-story deck on the premises, number eleven Prescott Street, is the applicant representative here?
Yes.
Okay, could you take an oath, please? Uh, Mr. Chin?
Yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll share my screen.
Okay. Two, twenty-two, twenty-two, what a two, two, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Uh-oh, what do I do this?
Alright, this one's on.
Okay. Hi, 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 good evening, uh, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Tan, uh, representing JCBT Architect on eleven Prescott Terrace. Um, we're proposing to, uh, demo the existing single-family, one-story. Um, currently, the footprint is about eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and the proposed structure, which is a two-and-a-half-story with no basement, basement will be cross-based, um, when the proposed footprint is about eleven-hundred and, uh, so square feet. And with three park, minimal, at least three parking spaces. We're only seeking for non-conforming lot size and setbacks. So, the proposed first floor will be just kitchen, living, dining, open space. Second floor will be three-bed, two-bath, and open, uh, finished playroom in the attic. And that is the proposed structure.
Now, when you're coming in this driveway, after you, the front driveway in the front of the house, when you're coming down prospect, you can see the buildings going into that, but it's still like, I don't know, eighteen and nineteen feet in? Is that correct?
Uh, the existing or the proposed?
The proposed.
The proposed is which side, this side of the street?
When you pull right in, you first pull in to the main, to the front of your building by rights, I know, not, not down the water street as it goes around, right as you pull in to, to the house. Now, that takes a, a minimum of two cars, no matter what you do with that, moving the house like that. You're gonna have two cars in there, 'cause it's like eighteen feet, nineteen feet at least.
Right, we're look, we're looking to either, if we can keep this driveway, we'll keep this driveway. If we cannot, we'll just, um, turn it back to a grass.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you keep that? Because there's no parking anywhere down there, none.
We have, we have a driveway.
I know, and you got two spots, when you have someone come over, you're not gonna have nowhere to park down there. That place is nowhere, you're lucky to get out and turn around and someone's yard, so.
Right, so we try to leave this.
I think it's that driveway out front, since it's there, you'll have two spaces there, two eighteen, eighteen spaces. I, I was, I drove and I couldn't put cars plus in there today. And then, and then your other driveway, I see the house is going back on the deck. Are, are you gonna? And I, you know, you're losing some of the spots there, but you've still got a minimum of two spots down in the back.
Yes, it will, yep, it has, we have at least three parking spaces.
I think you got four. I mean, if you make, if you leave this the way it is, that driveway, right, if you just pull in, and you got two in the back, I'd like to see four spots down there, 'cause I think you can't.
Okay, sure.
There's just no way to put an extra car when you, it, you have to go down the main street to, to, to park in front of someone's house, there's no parking.
Yeah. Sure, we can, we make sure that we can fit in four.
Just, just make them four spaces, that's what I would like to see, and, and.
Understood.
Yeah, and on your, uh, the porch coming out, I get it, that's what all the houses are down there, and you're doing the best you can, I think you did a good job trying to put it the best you can in the center, so, uh, you know, it's, it's a pretty house, and, and most of the houses are right up against the street, because there is no parking, there's, there's no, you, you can't park, there's no sidewalks, you can't park anywhere. You know, uh, kind of interesting, uh, uh, but no sidewalks, no nothing down there, just keep your eye out, the cars are coming, I guess. But you really have a, a beautiful lot there, it's, it's, it's a couple houses from the ocean. There's, uh, on the deck in the back, the second floor. I missed something, I thought we had a deck on the second.
No, just the front balcony, the front balcony.
Alright. Just the other side. They're not sure the same one, those, yeah. Alright. Uh, go ahead, you can finish, I was just asking about that.
Yep, I, um, I believe I'm done presenting.
Okay, alright, Mr. O'Brien, do you have any, any questions about that lot, it's a corner lot, I know it's tough.
Yeah, no, I, again, like you pointed out, the parking down there is, um, really difficult, so the more parking that they can squeeze in, I hate to say that, but.
Yeah, I know.
If they can, um, get four cars in there, that'd be good.
Yeah, they can, they can, even with the house in that corner right there, I pulled in there and, uh, to the old house, of course, and I stayed to the front, and I had my, my whole Jeep fit in there, plus I was inside their lot, so it does, with two cars in there, easy. In the back, of course, you can get at least two cars in there. Who knows, maybe three, I don't know. They stay inside the lot.
Yeah, anybody for a comment?
Is there, uh, comments, questions?
I'm good, Mr., I'm, I'm all set.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Mr. Chin?
No, I don't, I don't have any comments, I'm just looking at the height, it's gonna be thirty-four feet.
Yeah.
Um, and looking at the other homes in the area, just, uh, considering the the size in relation to the lot, it's, it's a pretty good-sized house.
I know, and when you get on the other side, it comes up from the east to the west, and, and right to their side, there's nothing there, it's a big giant empty lot, I know the lady, someone owns it. Uh, they have a big giant driveway, and it looks like a shed, you go into the left, and they have a big giant park, and then the house is way up front by the water, the other house up by the water, and there's a road to drive down. So, there's nothing on his other side at all, and, and and the street there, I, I think, I know the height's the height, but it's, it's, it's an unfinished second, uh, balcony up there, the, not the balcony, the attic is all unfinished. It, it's, I don't think it's gonna cause any problems with the neighbors, I really don't, the way it's situated, because the sun comes right up and goes straight over that house, so at eleven o'clock, ten o'clock, you'll have any amount of sun you want anywhere right on that property too, even, even on his west side, I think.
Right, well, I, I think it'll be an improvement and a good use of the space then.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mr. Himmel, questions?
As much as I'd like to see more grass, I think it's more important to get cars off the street out there. So, your, your, your recommendation to leave that existing driveway is, is a good one, I'd like to see that as well.
Yeah, so we'll just put it in there and make sure they get four spaces on there if it does pass. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone speak in favor, first call?
We have Colin.
Screen down?
Yep, I have Colin Jackson followed by Citizen Rota.
Colin Jackson, you're up, you gotta take an oath, please?
You gotta, you gotta unmute your.
Oh, yeah, there he is.
Mr. Jackson, do you, do you, Mr. Jackson, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
So, my name is Colin Jackson, I live at twenty-nine Prescott Terrace, two doors over, uh, my partner, John, had a comment.
Oh, no, uh, we're both, uh, very much in favor of the new proposed construction, I think it'll be an improvement for the street, we are all concerned about parking.
Yes.
So, uh, I think it's a great idea to keep, you know, four parking spots there, uh, friendly neighbors, and.
Yeah. Hey, you might need a spot this winter, who knows?
Exactly, well, we're up there right now.
I saw a car in there, I didn't know whose it was.
That, that, that's actually, it's across the street, and then my car's in there as well.
Yeah.
So, for the, for the, for the Fourth of July event, I've actually fit five cars in that driveway.
I bet you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet you can, pop, pack them in.
Yep.
That's what neighbors are for, right?
I'm sorry?
That's what neighbors are for.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, the previous owner was really good at that.
And I, I hope they know you're staying here, staying up all this time, just waiting to speak in favor, they gotta understand that, right? Name on it. Thank you for your time, and thanks for, thanks for hanging in for the meeting. Uh, Citizen Rota, fell, you're up? John?
Yeah, I'm here, thank you.
John, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do, John Rota, Phil, sixty-two Grandwall Road. Um, I was looking at the plans and, um, it, you know, from previous plans from the applicant that I've seen before, this is one of the better ones that I've seen, but as you said, Chairman Akins, you know, you know, you can take this for an idea, um, uh, this doesn't have to go to planning, am I correct? This just goes as own, 'cause, 'cause it's a small thing, so, you know, you gotta remember, when something doesn't have to go to planning, you kinda are the planning board in those cases.
Correct.
The only thing that is gonna screw up is parking, my idea is this is, take the building and move it down a little bit more to the left, so you make sure they have a two-car driveway on the other side where they can go right next door to each other, and, you know, if they have to get rid of some of that, you know, um, that deck, move that back and only have that going out six feet instead of twelve feet, I'm not even sure, like, on those couple documents that you were showing.
Ten feet.
Ten feet, so you could even move that into like six feet or something, and, you know, it's a matter of, that's where they need the parking, 'cause the neighbors across the street, it'd be better for them to see six feet of green space on the front of that, 'cause the front used to kinda be on the other side, now that's the side, so, I mean, you wanna have people parking cars in the, on both sides of, of, of property? You know what I'm saying? They're all gonna be.
Yeah, you do down there, John, because I'm telling you, there's no way, you can drive, you cannot park nowhere.
That's. Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying you could make that other driveway on the other side of the house, like a two-car side-by-side, and along with them being able to park behind each other, and maybe even put one in front and have five, definitely have four all the time.
I mean, you could probably put three in the back anyway and two in front, the way it's set, I, I put my car in there to check. So, there's five spots they got down there, probably, at least.
Right, but I'm, well, okay, well, I'm just saying that the house, the new house, you know, is gonna be, when it goes up, we'll see, I bet it's gonna be, um, you know, I don't think it's a giant house, that property, I mean, am I correct? It's only, it's, it's, it's less than five thousand square feet, that lot size, correct?
John? Yeah. John, I appreciate it, I really do.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, that lot size, it's hard to see those, those plots, it was like they were all together.
Yeah, it's like five.
Forty-three, ten.
Okay, okay, so, well, like I said, I just, I just think you just wanna make sure, I think a lot of times they, they say they're gonna make parking places just to make sure they put parking places in.
Put it in there.
Real parking places.
John, we're gonna put it in there.
Um.
Two up front, and a minimum of two in the back, that's four.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, brother. Anyone else, he's in favor?
We have, uh, Ives, I believe is how you say that screen name?
Eve, actually.
Eve, take an oath, please?
Eve, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, so, I'm one, I'm one of the neighbor, neighbors, I live at twenty-eight Prescott. And, uh, I mean, I wanna speak in favor of this, uh, this project. Our only concern is during construction, um, as everyone has stated, there's very little parking on the street.
Correct.
And with, uh, with the demo and the construction, uh, is making sure that construction workers don't park on the street, 'cause it can easily block our access to our houses.
Correct, and, and you know what, i- and if they do, you just say, you pack here again, have a tow, that's all, oh, please have a tow, but I know guys, when you run a single street like that, building a house, really, you gotta be considerate, if you gotta park up the street, three cars park up the street, and they take one truck down, you know, and, and a DPW, they're there to help you too, if anything like that ever happens, just make one call, and they'll send a cop down there and tell them what to do, like, guys, one car here, park up this church and come on back.
Yeah.
Uh, you can't block those streets down, especially that street. You know, you're almost in a hedge trying to get by somebody.
Yeah.
Right, right, it's tough, and we're gonna make sure they put four, four spaces, four parking spaces on that too, so they can even invite friends down there to park.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, like to speak in favor?
We have username CGCJV.
CDCJV, CV, could you take an oath, please?
Yep. Ready?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Do.
Yeah.
You have the floor.
Yep, thanks, um, this is Margoe Fana and, um, uh, Chris Fana, we're the adjacent neighbors at, uh, nineteen Prescott. Um, generally, we're, we're in favor, but we do just have some, some questions and wanna understand um, about the, the attic and why the dormer's on there, just would like some, some rationale for why that extra height.
That's for the stairs to walk up, I believe. Uh, the architect could, uh, go through that with you.
But I guess fu- functionally, what, what purpose that serves? Beyond stairs.
It's just a little more space.
The attic is for just open playroom. And storage.
Finished, correct?
I'm sorry?
Not finished, you said.
It will be finished for open attic, open playroom, and.
It will be finished for open attic, open playroom and portion storage, because they don't have a basement. Or they'd be some, you know, open playroom.
And how big is that?
No bathroom or anything upstairs.
Oh, all right, we gotta do the same thing.
Yeah.
Get room up there, no, no restrooms. Uh, I see what you did, yeah.
Just open finished space.
Yeah. What's the height on the other side? Yeah, it comes down, correct on the? Yeah, they got that, that on that side. I see what you're running, yeah. The stairs up in the middle. That's about higher right there. There's not a lot of, a lot of room.
About.
Playroom's only the middle section of it, really. I mean, you don't have the height there though, on the other side. Five foot ceiling.
It's under the, under the peat and in front of the dormer.
Right.
The attic space.
Right. Right, all right, we'll put that in there to make sure this, there's not gonna be no, uh,
Sure.
bedroom up there. Same thing as we just did with the other people, because you know, you got a decent sized house, but can't have bedrooms all over the place and everything else, just kind of, you kind of just fit that lot the way it should be fit, I guess. Is, is that what you're talking about? I want to make sure there's no bedrooms up there. We'll make sure there's no, uh, toilets and running water, so no one can put a room up there or a bathroom. Okay?
Yep, that's the main concern. Um, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Speak in favor? Last call?
Not seeing any other hands.
Call our party hearing closed. I got a letter here from the DPW, January twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, eleven Prescott Terrace, case number ZB eight twenty-two, three. We have reviewed the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased through development. Two, provide plan showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage and construction details. Three, upon completion of the project, as build plan showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with digital file. If there's anything further, please advise. Is there, we'll call our party hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided?
Not seeing any hands.
Okay, and I'll take one moment. Right here is Mr. Ray Dell, Vice Chair. He's with us. You were with this whole case?
Sorry, I muted, uh, because I got a house full of disaster here that I'm trying to avoid.
No, that's all right, but you were with this whole.
Yeah, I heard the whole thing. I'm good.
Uh, any comments?
I have none at this time.
Okay. Uh, second call? Third call. Call our party hearing closed. You know, it's, it's a nice, nice house, but the only thing I want to see on there, uh, Mr. O'Brien, if you could, four parking spaces.
Yeah.
On the front, on the back minimum, uh, for that lot, so I guess some nice, nice, nice place to park there. They really do, and they should take advantage of that. Get them four spaces, because there is no way. You get, you'll have to picks up someone at the church. You know what I mean, down the street? Uh, maybe you can rent the space if you have a party across that apartment building.
I have a comment. If, um, we update the plot plan to show the parking space, do we need to come back for the next hearing?
No, no. When you get your, when you get your plans, just tell Mr. Dupa you want, uh, you can upload, upload the new plans to them, show four spaces, uh, yeah, and just send it in. Mr. Dupa, he'll just make sure that's done before you get a permit.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Yep, yep, too. Want to speak, Mr. Dupa?
Oh, yeah, I will.
All right. Anyone else? Last call. Call our party hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Ray Dell. Yes?
All right, takes me a second there. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm in favor as well.
Mr. O'Brien?
In favor.
Mr. Chin?
Yes, but the conditions are in favor.
Yep.
And Mr. Himmel?
Yeah, with the noted conditions in favor.
Okay, Mr., well, Mr. O'Brien, let's finish up with the, uh.
Okay. Mr. Chairman regarding case, uh, twenty-two dash three, JCBT Architect for a variance to construct a new two and a half story, single family home with a one-story deck on the premises, number eleven Prescott Terrace, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the variance, subject to the following conditions. There'll be four parking spaces, two on each side of the house. The attic will not be used or be built out as a bedroom, and no bathroom is permitted in the attic.
Second it?
Second you.
On the motion, CNN, ma'am clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yes, Brian, go.
He's clicking.
He's not in, okay.
He says yes. He said yes. He's in, he thumbed up.
I'm in, I'm good.
He's good.
Thank you. Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
And Mark Niget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh, can I have a motion, please, Charlie, to?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to what do you want to do? To adjourn the meeting of February twenty-second of two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, close. Guys, thanks to me and, uh.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
Thank you everybody for hanging in and testifying. Night now.
Right, hey, guys.
Recording stopped.
The recording has stopped.